They've asked for a continuance. Melissa...
She has pneumonia.
Melissa?
Melissa?
Melissa Duchesne. So 7 Gorham Street is going to be continued.
Colleen, do we have any computers?
We don't need them tonight. I didn't even bother because the only few couple of us.
Oh, okay.
We're not hearing this.
Yeah, I see that.
We're not.
It's still 54. Oh, that's easy. Okay, thanks.
So we don't need them. Do we hear from Mr.?
Yeah, I can read without.
Are we going to continue?
We don't have a quorum of qualified voters, so they're just going to leave. I mean, we're going to stay and listen to some of our stuff, but we can't hear it tonight anyway.
So he knows that he can leave when he wants to.
Yes.
Should I go through and continue all the ones that we're going to continue? Because other people are there for him.
I think that'd be smart, yeah.
Okay, so it's...
That was six to one, Carl.
This is a continuation. This is a continuation.
Not me, I mean, I mean you guys. Do you have enough people to vote on?
Right.
Oh, okay. Three is a quorum?
Okay. We have a quorum, but the ones that like the comprehensive, we can't.
Because you didn't hear the original testimony.
So he's going to continue our new ones.
So we don't have a quorum on?
So nobody sits here for no reason.
61 Carlisle Street.
Okay.
The attorney. What's her name? Emily should be first.
What's it take for a quorum? Four?
Yes, because there's Jerry. There's five members, so four. But we just need to let everybody know.
Four for an affirmative vote, three for a quorum.
Yeah, I got that.
Four for an affirmative vote, three for a quorum.
I didn't make the copies, but...
You require an affirmative vote?
Well, it'll be part of the record. I guarantee it.
You need four members to grant us a variance.
Oh, you are? Who's the other alternate? The gentleman that was?
I don't know.
That guy that?
He might know, I don't know.
You're certain? Oh, sure.
There you go.
Charlie.
Is Jackie an alternate?
Steve.
Who's the alternate?
But is Steve coming back?
Oh, okay.
Is Steve coming back?
No.
Not tonight.
That's why we had the early meeting, because that's the only time he could come.
Oh, wow.
And we were on a timed.
And we kept him later than we should.
Wow, you guys are good.
So this is, you deserve gold stars today.
Good to hear, Charlie. How are you? Good, how are you?
Wonderful, let me tell you. It's great, life is so good.
Another day in paradise.
No, that's not 71, this is Parker. We haven't read anything, so all of these are new. Because we opened it, and then he continued it, and we didn't take any testimony.
There's been enough testimony, so all those letters will be dead.
That's Glenn. And then... Yeah, so read those two first, and then... I think I left the whole file. That's an appealing one, that's going to be fine.
Okay, so we're going to continue without reading the other four.
Yeah, continue without testimony.
And that hasn't opened anybody's, right?
Yeah, actually, that's been posted that way, so you can just note it.
Yeah, I'll read this, and then request a continuation.
And this is for, you can give them this one. This is 2610. Okay.
Done? Sure.
Okay, see that it is seven o'clock? We'll begin the meeting. I've got a couple continuances here. There is a attorney who's not feeling too well, and a couple other issues. So we are going to continue Thomas Gonzalez 132 Tingsborough Road, also known as, AKA, also known as lot 1A Dunstable Road. They are seeking a variance under 195.9 conformity and a special permit under 195.9B conformity required to create a new lot from an existing lot which will not conform to the requirements in the RB zoning district. Lot frontage, lot width, lot area, and side setbacks. We will not be taking testimony tonight. That will be continued to February 1st, 2018. I'm going to go out of order here, because I don't want people waiting unnecessarily if they're hearing other views. We are hearing a 40B application for Pineview Estates in 7 Gorham Street and 1 Pineview Avenue in Chelmsford. Dear Ms. Stanfield and members of the board, I'm writing behalf of my client, Pineview Condominiums LLC, J. Bergland. Manager, I am writing to request to continue the hearing scheduled for Thursday, January 11th, 2018, until your hearing date scheduled for Thursday, February 1st, 2018. The reason for the request is that we would like to have a full boarding, voting board present at the hearing. Also, please allow this letter to serve as the applicant's formal extension to allow the zoning board to extend the lifetime, the life timeframe for the issuance of the decision in accordance with 760 CMR 56 until February 5th, 2018. Melissa E. Robbins. Would I take a motion on that, Paul? You got a motion to continue Pineview Estates in 7 Gorham Street?
So moved, Brian.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have another continuance for 95 Drumhill Road, Chelmsford, Mass. Dear Colleen and members of the board, I am writing on behalf of my client, Auto Fair Realty, Chelmsford LLC, to request to continue the hearing scheduled for January 11th, 2018, until your hearing date scheduled for February 1st, 2018. The reason for the request is that I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. Sincerely, Melissa E. Robbins. Would I get a motion to continue 95 Drumhill Road?
Continue 95 Drumhill till our next scheduled meeting.
Second that.
Second, all in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Those will not be heard tonight. We have a continued public hearing. Pam Vega, 54 Parker Road. Looking for a variance under 195.9 conformity to split existing conforming lot with a non-conforming structure, front setback, corner lot into two non-conforming lots. I think we have Mr. Houser here, too.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Are we sitting with a four-member board?
Yes.
So that's my understanding, we would need a 4-0 vote to grant?
Yes.
Okay.
George.
Understanding that.
Your choice whether or not, whether to proceed on...
I just wanted to put on the record, we understand that. I've explained it to my client that it needs to be a 4-0 vote, and we are willing to proceed. So that's on the record. Again, for your record, Douglas Houser, I'm representing the Coughlin Family Trust, whose current, under power of attorney authority, Pam Vega is with me on behalf of her mother, who is unable to attend because of physical problems. We are asking for variance with respect to one of the two parcels that I've attached in the, and you'll see on the plan. The only variance that we need, I believe, is for lot area. This is a somewhat unique property, and let's start right with the three criteria. The first is, is it unique? Apart from the shape of the lot, which makes it unique within the entire, within the entire district, not just the neighborhood, but the proposed lot, which I'm going to point to, this is where we're talking about getting the variance for. There is no other lot of similar size and/or shape in the neighborhood or in the district. It's also unique because it has the required frontage as a separate, if it was a separate parcel, you grant us the variance. I'm not aware of any other parcel within that neighborhood, within blocks going around and using that as the epicenter, that have 200-plus feet of frontage, as if we added both parcels together. So that's another unique feature for that particular lot. Let's go next to this, is it a substantial derogation from the intent of the zoning bylaw? If you were to vote in favor of this, I submit to you, it would not be. Why? We're dealing with an RB district. Its proposed use is entirely consistent with the intent of the zoning bylaw. It's going to be a single-family home of modest proportion, consistent with what exists in that neighborhood, and frankly, within the entire RB district. And to my knowledge, it's, as an RB district, the only use it can be, practically speaking, is a single-family home. It can't be commercial, can't be industrial, can't be multifamily. So we are very limited with respect to what could be done with this parcel absent a variance. I have provided to you in a submission, submittal with about, I don't know, 18 or 19 different exhibits, the fact that these, these, both of these parcels, there's actually three parcels, we've combined two of them into the one, which is the 18,000 square foot parcel, I believe. I just want to check on that.
Explain that again.
This parcel is registered land, has a separate title. The recorded land has a separate title. That's going to stay with the existing. The other is regular recorded land. All have separate chains of title. So that's another unique feature about this particular application. I keep using that word, unique, because that's obviously one of the most important things you need to consider of the three criteria. Besides uniqueness, how is it a allowance of a variance here? How would that be in derogation of the intent of the zoning bylaw? It's not as to use, it's not as to frontage, it's not as to front yard setback, because we meet that, it's not as to side yard, because we meet that, and it's also not as to rear yard, because we meet that as well. So we are talking about lot area alone. Lot area, the purpose of that in a zoning bylaw is primarily to focus on concerns of density within a particular neighborhood. There's case law that discusses that exact point. So that's why we have these setbacks to begin with, is to not allow a neighborhood to become too dense, to be overdeveloped. So with that in mind, I ask you to take a look at, and I think I attached it as exhibit... Let me find it. Phew, I think it's the last one that I, oh, no, strike that, I'm sorry. Not sure if you have it with you. I'll, let me provide you with this. This is a, the assessor's map. I'm not sure you have this. I'll pass these out by now. Nope, it's a little different. I marked this one in color, so we can understand what we're talking about very clearly. This addresses what I consider called density and consistency with the intent of the zoning bylaw. And what you'll see, I highlighted, I hope it shows up in yellow on your plan. So that's the particular existing house, and then you'll see next to it, below it, a circle in blue with .43 acres of land. That's the parcel we're seeking the variance for. So what I did is I went around the neighborhood, and I asked to myself, what are the size and areas and shapes of the various lots? And yes, there are many lots in that area that are an acre or more, no dispute. I would submit to you, though, when you look at this, you'll see that almost 50% of the lots surrounding this particular proposed application also are roughly, are certainly not in conformity with the zoning district of an acre. And you'll see that they range from .34, .41, another .34, 44, 45s, one across the street, .66. You know, we have all, another one is only .25, a quarter acre, which is basically within a couple hundred, 100 yards or so, 200 yards of the house that we're talking about, the structure. So what I'm trying to prove to you is, the density for the district, our zoning bylaw was enacted with the one acre to just, so it gives this board the opportunity to review applications to, to address issues of density. And all I'm saying is, if you allow the variance, it is entirely consistent with that neighborhood, which is surrounded with similar-sized lots. We're not increasing traffic. There's no question about safety, because as far as I'm aware, there haven't been any letters from the fire department or the police department in opposition to this proposed application that I'm aware of. Maybe something came in in the last minute, but I'm not aware of it. And obviously, you can gain access to the proposed house that would be built there, so we don't have a public safety issue. So strictly from a density viewpoint, we're asking for one single-family house on a piece of land that is exactly the same as probably almost half within that neighborhood. And what we're asking you is to use your discretion on behalf of the town in a local level to identify that that's a consistent, that that's, the density is not overly affected by allowance of a variance in this particular instance, given the locale as the surrounding properties. There's additional hardship here, and that's going to be a point I'm sure that I'm going to get contested on by Attorney Hall, who's here representing several abutters. And to that point, let me advise the board. We did continue this hearing last time without testimony, is my recollection, or maybe, no, we just continued it, excuse me. And what we did is, we reached out to several of the abutters, asking to see if they could give us particularized reasons why they would be in opposition to it. I had received two letters, one, and they speak for themselves, they, they were not interested, and they said they were going to oppose, which is their right. I am going to ask the board, though, to do what I can't do when I'm representing somebody here, but if I was sitting in your chair, I could, which is when anybody comes up to speak, either in favor or against, and I care, obviously concerned about the ones that are against, if the board would ask those people, what is particular harm to you by allowance of this variance? Because I don't see it. I get there's this general concept of a variance, and by definition, the variance is at odds, no question. But I want to understand, what is the particularized injury or harm that any of these people are going to come up and say, if you allow this, we are harmed? I'm going to suggest to you that the setbacks having all been met, and no structure being that close, it's all consistent with the zoning bylaw. So I'm going to have a tough time understanding their harm. There's hardship also, and I had some case law I found on this, because everybody's saying, oh, economic hardship doesn't matter. Well, actually, it does. And it's particular to this lot. So regardless of the applicant and the situation the applicant is in with respect to her mother being ill and needing the money for expenses to take, for caretaking, that actually is not material to your consideration or any other person in this room. What is material, though, is what is the permitted use of that property? It's single-family alone. And if you, if there's nothing else under the zoning bylaw for what that property can be used for but residential, without zoning relief, we have no remedy. We are suffering, my client would be suffering a hardship. And that is because the zoning bylaw limits it to residential use, single-family. And if you deny our relief because of the zoning dimensional requirements, it's hardship because we have no practical use for that property. The case that I want to cite on that talks about where the hardship affects the locus is peculiar and not merely a personal, is Gamache versus Akushnet. It's a 1982 Mass. Appeals Court case that talks about why you have to be specific to the lot, not to the person or the applicant. I'm also going to talk about that the desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And when you're dealing with dimensional requirements, and here it's only area, they're intended to protect the zoning bylaw's interest in regulating or reducing density. And that's O'Connell versus Van Nisi, a 2012 Mass. Appeals Court case, and the Dwyer versus Gallo case in 2008. And it defines the RB zone here of the subject lot as a low-density, single-family residential district. That's entirely what we're suggesting here, keeping consistent with the density of the entire district.
Can you give me a little information? We have three separate lots at this point?
On a sub, from a title viewpoint, yes. From, from the subdivision plan, there would be, I would believe there are two separate plans. I think I've highlighted all of them in the submittals. It, they've been what I call gerrymandered, they've been carved out over, you know, decades of land, and this is the resulting piece. The property with the address of 54 Parker Road, which is the existing single-family home, that's the registered land parcel. That plan was Land Court Plan 39106A, and it's been a separate and distinct lot since 1962. And that's, that came into Mrs. Coughlin's, that, that land was a result of a Land Court petition in 1963 by Mr. and Mrs. Coughlin, when they had a property dispute with neighbors in the past. Going to the next, the small parcel, which was, there's a...
At this point, that property is owned by Mr. and Mrs.?
No, it's, it's now Coughlin Family Trust, yeah. But their predecessor and title were Mr. and Mrs. Coughlin. And that arose, Brian, from the, from the boundary disputes in 1963. It became a Land Court registered land parcel on a separate plan of land with Land Court.
Okay.
The next parcel was about 4,600 square feet. That's in a plan, plan book, let's see where we are here. Separate deed, I'm sorry, deed in 2005, which derived back to 1999, and ultimately derives from a chain of title in 1944. Separate parcel.
And who is the owner of record?
Now, the Coughlin Family Trust. And the third chain of title is going back, and that eventually got purchased in 1944, was, was when it was created, and it was eventually purchased by the Coughlin Family as a result of it being a leftover parcel. They bought the, the land. So what I think we've tried to show you is that we have unique chains of title, some of which are subject to Land Court jurisdiction, some which are not. We have separate plans of record, we have a, we have subdivision plans of record in the past, and all we're asking for is a very minimal variance that is consistent with the other area homes within the district, and particularly within the neighborhood.
The least lots become cajoined at this point?
For zoning purposes, yes. Not for title purposes, but for zoning purposes.
I will tell you, the last time we did this, it was a grave mistake.
That's the case of Burdo versus Blake, which was 2017. I, I have it here, actually.
I have another one in mind.
Okay.
We created a lot from an existing lot, we granted the variance to allow two small lots, and it, it really did not go well for the town in general.
Well, it didn't, because...
My opinion.
I understand that, and, and Brian, I'm very familiar with that. I think the case you're referring to, I'm going to the Burdo case, which is 2017, and in that, it was remanded back to the board. But the judge, the Land Court judge on that one, I believe, it was Land Court, did find at the end of the day, where the uses were consistent, that was okay, and the court in that case found, upheld the grant of a variance as to one of the criteria, which was hardship. And that's almost what we're talking about here. The hardship issue here is that we have no other use of the land as a result of the zoning bylaw.
Honestly, sir, and I, and certainly not to your experience, but we don't have a hardship if we don't demise the lot, if it's cajoined. It's a lot, it's a single lot.
Has, but it has, it came from a separate title, so it's rendered useless, Brian.
I would defer to Mr. Harry, because I do not know how this is not a single lot, if it's owned in common ownership. I don't know, I'm not saying it.
I think, I think there's, there are separate doctrines here. For conveyancing purposes, they remain separate lots. But for zoning purposes, due to the merger doctrine, they're treated as a single lot, unless this board grants a variance, essentially allowing it to be treated separately.
So that's why we're before the board, otherwise we wouldn't have to be before the board. And all I'm suggesting is, Brian and members of the board, that we're satisfying the three criteria for a variance in this instance. So the board has, has jurisdiction over it and can review it and consider it in context with the zoning bylaw, as applied to that neighborhood and that district, peculiar to that particular parcel.
Can I ask a question?
I know you can't, ma'am. We will open the floor to anyone that would like to speak, but Mr. Houser has the floor. So...
This is in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. That's another, almost direct quote from the Burdo case.
By doing this, aren't we also, well, we have a non-conforming lot, a pre-existing non-conforming lot?
You do, because the structure's non-conforming. 54 Parker Road doesn't meet all of the zoning requirements for the RB district. So it's a non-conforming lot as is. Or a non-conforming parcel of land, I should say.
With a conforming lot, that would be a distinct problem to create a non-conforming lot.
I don't think it changes the, the review in this instance, whether or not what's there, is existing conforming or non-conforming?
Because we're creating a non-conformity on an existing lot.
I think you, you may have additional concerns if these, for conveyancing purposes, weren't separate lots. I mean, I think that, that enters into the discussion, and I'm not sure that it's dispositive. I mean, I could see having concern if you had a single lot, as shown as a single lot, and they simply wanted to carve off a piece. That's a little more, a little more common of a situation, and it would have greater replicability. So I understand why there'd be concern, that would be different for that sort of situation. But ultimately, what you need to be doing right now is looking at the standards for granting a variance. Do they meet the hardship that's related to lot shape, soil conditions, or topography?
Okay.
And to add to exactly the point of the criteria, and particularly hardship, I addressed the attention to the 1964 SJC case of Chater versus Board of Appeals of Milton, in which a lot of land that was non-buildable under the terms of a zoning bylaw was a factor which a Board of Appeals could consider in determining whether a hardship exists. That's exactly what we have here. It's within your discretion. It's not just black letter. It's a discretion for you to exercise upon consideration of all of the relevant facts with respect to this particular locus. And putting aside personalities, past history, which I understand motivates some people here, I, I put all of those things aside. That's unfortunate, whatever occurred in the past, whatever bad blood may exist between abutters and my client and her, her parents in the past, shouldn't be the issue for opposing this. What we need to focus on is the land itself, and that's what we're asking this board to do, when it, on this application, and then when you have people speaking, to identify what, what harm is there by allowing it to them. Not, oh, because it's against the law or it's against the district. That's your job. But what to them is particularly harmful? Loss of privacy? We're cutting down more trees? No. Pretty much leaving the lot intact, but for putting a structure on it that's consistent with the rest. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
The board have any questions for Mr. Housler?
Hey, can I just tell a little story? You know, Len used to tell stories. When I first got on the Board of Appeals three or four years ago, we had many lots. And one lot particularly, I recommend, I remember. I don't recommend it, I remember. And the lot was 39,000 square feet. And I was also at the vote, yes, because it was really close, and everybody else said, "No, we have to have 40,000 square feet." So how we, how the engineer did it is he took one lot and made the lot line on the border of the barn. It was on the barn. So he made the lot 40,000. And as soon as he did that, we were all in agreement that it was, that it was a good lot, and it got approved.
Wouldn't need the-
And since then, maybe for setback or something. And since then, we've been, I've been sticking to that, like, my own little agreement with myself, that if the lot was not 40, I wasn't going to vote for it. And that's my story.
Good story.
May I inquire, based on that story?
Yes.
Under, are you saying that under no circumstances, in your view, that any lot under 40,000 square feet is a proper application for variance?
There's always exceptions, Doug. There's always exceptions. There's always-
All right. So you're not hard in facts, it's not black and white to you. That, all, what I'm asking, Charlie, is are we going to get a fair shake?
Of course.
Well-
That's why we're here.
No, the reason I ask the question is not out of disrespect. It's what you just said is pretty, here's a line drawn in your own, what you apply to yourself.
Yes.
And all I'm saying is, that sounds to me very close to a predetermination that if you're not at 40, don't bother coming before me, at least as a member of the board. And I really don't think that's what you intend.
To me, it sounded like what he was saying was, I'm going to take a very, very close look at something that's not meeting the lot area requirements.
And that's fine with me. I just want to make sure that that record is clear on that point.
Stringently apply the variance standards.
Fair enough. Okay. I just want the fair shake, that's all, for my client, not for me. Thank you, though. I appreciate your candor.
Welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Housler?
I have a question for you, just because I'm new. What determines whether it's a land court? You were talking about land court issues or not land court issues?
I'm going to want Mr. Haverty to explain that.
Mr. Haverty knows about it. So this, yeah, it's a little bit of an interesting thing there. Massachusetts is unique in that it has a system of registered land, which is frequently referred to as land court land. Most land is actually held as what's known as recorded land. Registered land is looked at a lot more closely when there are changes that are being made. You can't adverse possess or get a prescriptive easement over land court land. So when he's referring to the land court land, it's actually held in a different type of land registry system than the other parcel is.
How did that come about?
Anybody has the right to petition the land courts to have their land registered. And it sounds like that there was some sort of a property boundary dispute at one point that led to this land becoming, that portion of it becoming registered.
Thank you.
Sounds exactly right. May I leave you with this thought, and then I'll wait to listen to other people's comments? The case that was recently decided involving the Chelmsford zoning bylaw, and it was the case where, and it said, "The Murphys presented evidence of how a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise." And the land court said, "I credit this evidence. Substantial hardship is found where, under unique circumstances, it is not economically feasible, or it's not likely that the locus would be developed in the future for a use permitted by the zoning bylaw." A land court case, talking about the Chelmsford zoning bylaw, saying that, and the court found the evidence to be credible and made a finding that that was, that constituted substantial hardship. It did remand the case for other reasons, it's back to the board. But on that issue of hardship, which is what we're focused on tonight, because we hit uniqueness, there is no question we hit uniqueness. And there's very little doubt that we hit, that satisfied there's no substantial derogation from the intent of the bylaw, because the use and all the other setback requirements are met. So what we're talking about is hardship, and this is very close to a court that's determined exactly what we propose, what constitutes hardship. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And for the board's reminder, that case is currently under appeal at the appeals court. That decision by the land court's currently under appeal at the appeals court.
I'm going to allow anyone who'd like to speak tonight to speak. I understand there was an attorney that is representing certain clients. If I could just understand who you're representing and-
Yes, sir.
How you'd like to present the-
The chairman and members. I'm attorney James P. Hall of Quahog, Harvey &amp; Walsh at 25 Fletcher Street. I represent Richard Rock and Marlene Rock of Ford Dummer Lane, Drummer Lane, Celine Ribbon of Three Drummer Lane, William Clark of Three Drummer Lane, Pat Rowe and Paul Arro of 52 Parker Road, Paul Gugliotti of 16 Stage Road, and Nancy Fagan of 16 Stage Road.
And are they here tonight?
They all are here.
If I could just get everyone whose name is mentioned to agree that the attorney will speak for you. I can suggest if you would like to come up and speak yourself, it's going to be a little repetitive, and there's obviously a large crowd, so if you're comfortable with that, I'm going to listen to your attorney and not have you speak. And anyone who is not represented by the attorney is certainly welcome to speak. That work for everybody?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, they agreed to that beforehand to shorten this.
I just am trying to avoid, you know, I think a lot of concerns are similar here.
Yes. I'm here really to talk about the land. I did have a much larger presentation, but I'd like to focus on three areas where individual people brought certain things up. I think the most important thing to realize is that we are a nation of laws, and you all are empowered to grant variances by the legislature only under certain criteria. And your counsel brought that up at one point. But Section 10 only gives this board the authority to grant variances related to hardships created by shape, soil, or topography. And that's not the situation here. There's not one case now, or will there ever be, that the SJC has entertained that granted a variance based on area. And that's what the petitioner has admitted this is about. Section 10 does not give this board the authority to grant a variance when lot size is the issue. And I believe Mr. Wojo's alluded to that with his comments, in that this is clearly under 40,000 square feet, which is required in this RB zone. And this is almost half that size from my calculation. And it is, as the chairman brought up, three areas that I'd like to address, too. The structure on there has a non-conformity. There are three lots, which I think people are alluding to, that they had merged together. And lastly, when you take about half of this off and try to create another lot, you are creating your own hardship. There isn't a hardship there now but for efforts to create a hardship. There's not 40,000 square feet. They're solely asking for a variance based on area, which is not permitted by the law. I think it's interesting to note, too, in regards to the merger issue, that since 1976, my clients have told me that these lots have been held in common ownership. There's no dispute that they're in common ownership now, but it is clearly treated as one lot for zoning purposes. They may have different titles, and there are storied paths in regards to how they came about, but it is one lot for zoning purposes. And I dispute that the non-conformity isn't intensified when you take half the land area from that lot and function and try to create another lot by itself and build another property. Additionally, my clients have also informed me that these lots were left the way they were because other lots were split out and development occurred. While the petitioner notes that there are some lots or similar lots that have lot size like this, my clients have informed me that in the last 22 years, within 600 feet of this parcel, there have been 22 homes constructed approximately, and they all have conformed with the 40,000 square feet that the RB zone requires. I'd like also to point out some of the case law that's been put in the petitioner's letter or that's been brought up today. I'd just like to, again, stress that the statute does not permit variances for area. And area shouldn't be confused with shape, which I think is part of the uniqueness argument. It doesn't matter if the shape is unique if there is insufficient lot area. And the Mitchell versus Board of Appeals of Revere case for the appeals court clearly indicates that. And Bruseus versus Board of Appeals of Hingham has also said, "A lot lacking sufficient area is not eligible for a variance solely based on the circumstance," which is before you. I'd also point out on the petitioner's letter on page four, it cites dimensional variances. Dimensional variances, if you read it closely, aren't to be confused with area variances. Dimensional variances in those cases cited deal with bay heights in garage-type facilities or reorienting properties related to dimensions. They don't deal with insufficient area for a lot. And that's because you can't get a variance under Section 10 if you have insufficient lot area. Again, I'd like to stress that functionally, these three lots are together treated as one lot for zoning purposes. You have a non-conformity that received a variance on the existing property. The petitioner wants to strip half of that away and create a lot which doesn't have 40,000 square feet. You just can't do that under the zoning bylaws or the law, and I ask you to deny this petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to take some input from the audience now, sir. Is it possible for you to approach the podium?
I'll give you a mic.
Yes, sir.
I don't get around too well.
Get a little bit right here.
As far as it goes.
Okay. But just put it there. Thank you very much to the board for letting me address you.
And if I could get your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I'm John Gallant. I'm at 2 Wells Fargo Road. And let me also say, Pam, would you give Emily my very, very best wishes? Tell her we think of her often, hope she's doing as well as possible. She's so nice. Anyway, thank you again very much for allowing us to address you. I'm John Gallant, as I said. I'm one of the many neighbors that are affected by this action. Reference a notice of Pam submitted, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That, on behalf of Emily, I assume Emily is still the owner of record of 54 Parker Road, but I assume Pam is at the power of attorney. Emily moved into a nursing home several months ago. And I assume she's staying there? As far as we know. Emily, through her trust, sold a large tract of land to the developer that built the seven large homes on Parker and Wells Fargo Roads. These homes are all in excess of half a million dollars. They're not small places like the one being described for the proposal. With the addition of a new house that's proposed by Pam. Emily did nothing to compromise the neighborhood's standards while she was living there, but Pam now proposes to parlay the adjacent unbuildable lot next to her mother's home into an additional income for the trust that I assume she now manages. Pam lives in New Hampshire and doubtfully intends to reside in Emily's vacant house or the new house that she proposes. As Pam sells her mother's old home on 54 Parker Road, she will leave all of us current residents with the compromised building standards for the entire neighborhood. And I'm speaking mainly for Wells Fargo and the seven families there, and of course, the people on Wells Fargo.
Unless you have their permission, I will stick to what you have.
Sure, yeah. I will, yeah. I had to end my Air Force career after 39 years because of numerous service-related handicaps. And I had to purchase a handicap-equipped house at 2 Wells Fargo. Obviously, they're very expensive, as I said, and it took up most of our savings. If ever I needed to sell that home, because I, like Emily, had to go into a nursing home, I'd want to be able to recover somewhat of the value of that house. If the neighborhood standards are compromised, I may well have trouble doing that. I mean, I could pull some trick over modifying my house into a two-family house or some of those silly things to try to, you know, increase what I could receive from the property, but that kind of thing is not right to your neighbors. You don't do that kind of thing and destroy the value of your neighbor's properties, I don't think. Simply, nobody has a right to compromise the building standards that exist, as they do exist in that neighborhood. I'm concerned that we had to have a knee-jerk reaction to this very short notice that we received. I appreciate finally having the opportunity to at least offer my comments. Fortunately, it was continued to give us a little bit of time to prepare this kind of thing. But again, there's so many other issues that haven't been approached yet. We simply, as neighbors, have not had a chance to look at all the different factors. You know, I assume that property that we're talking about is also an animal passageway. There's the creeks there. I, you know, we need more time to even get into all the different factors that probably Again, I very much appreciated the meeting being continued until the Fourth of January, as it was. But of course, we had the snow. But my biggest concern is that very few of us even received those registered letters. And those of us that did, they were just simple letters that, you know, you could easily pass as something that, you know, you're not even sure what it all meant. Most, most of the people, all people on my street-
Did you personally receive it?
Did not even receive a letter. You got their Butters. I really think that-
I'm not aware that we have, do we have the cards that we, you know?
I'm sorry?
We don't send certified. It's a certificate of mail, and yes, we do have the, what, who was sent to.
I'm sorry, I can't hear at all.
I'm just trying to understand who did not receive a card. Is anyone in attendance that's in a Butter or a Director Butter that did not receive a card?
All the-
No, no, we don't send cards. We just send a letter. That's all that's required by law.
So there's no signing with this?
No.
So you're saying you did not receive a letter? And what's your address?
67, I'm directly across the street from the park.
What's your, I mean-
Do you own the house?
Can we look at the list and see if she was on it? I'm glad you're alerted to it. At that point, that really is the concern, that you're aware that this process is going through. I don't think-
By my neighbors.
Did you not get one as well?
Correct. I'm on Hall Road, 67. It's right, I'm right at the end of Hall.
Take a look at the map.
I will.
So, Mr. Chairman- The one on the end of, on the corner of Hall and Parker?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the requirement for mail notification applies to a Director Butters and a Butters to a Butters within 300 feet and someone that's located directly across the street. So it may be if someone is a little bit further down that they would not have received notice. Although I think generally, I'm not saying you're not. I'm just trying to explain what the requirement is.
But all the-
Although generally, I believe the town sends out, there's a 300-foot radius.
Yeah, it's a 300-foot.
But that's not actually what the requirement for notice is.
I'm within the 300.
Only for Wells Fargo, where I live, there are seven of us, and we did not receive the letters.
I would think that, and I don't know the numbers on these, unfortunately, but with 300 feet, I would think there may be one, I can't say, honestly. I do not know that answer.
In fact, the one that was received was not a registered letter either. It was just a regular, simple letter that you could pass off as junk mail, if you didn't know what it was.
What's up on the screen is the circle that a Butters that would have gotten it.
Yeah, but I-
I was notified that a other- I was notified that a other applicant, upon getting the certified, this comes from the assessor's office, the tax database, was dropped somehow, and it was a direct-a-butter. So this is an issue that the town has become aware of. We did, the biggest thing is attorney Haverty would say was that you were aware or made aware of the process that's going on, and if there's an issue with the town, we are working on it.
So is the 300 feet to 54 Parker, or does it also include this other lot that's in question?
54 Parker. They are separate tax parcels.
Right now, 54 Parker is everything. There's only one...
Except the ones closer to... No, for assessing purposes, I shouldn't speak because I haven't looked at it, but it can be separate for assessing purposes because it's not a newly created lot. It's an existing lot with a separate legal identity. They're only a single lot for zoning purposes, which means if they wanted to come and actually build something on there, you not only look at that lot, you look at the lot that's contiguous to it because they've merged for zoning purposes, which is why they need a variance.
Which, what street?
Oh, sorry. I'm just pointing to her where I am on there.
Oh, okay.
And you're within the circle?
Yeah, just touches it.
Mr. Housler?
I just have a point of order to clarify something. The parcels are separately taxed, to answer your question.
I just saw the one in there, a separate feet for them as well.
Yes.
It's the only one that's around here at all. Does someone else would like to speak this evening regarding this application?
Can I just finish real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I apologize.
Okay, I'll be as fast as possible. I realize I'm taking a lot of time. I'm confident that the other six family members on my street, if they hadn't noticed, they'd be here just like me because they're, again, the property value is going to be impacted, and there's little doubt on that. And all I would ask is that the appropriate registered letters be sent out so we can all be aware of this kind of things going on.
As they should be.
I'll be, I'll, I do have one question though for Pam's attorney. He alluded to...
Please, sir?
You got a directive?
Address the board.
Questions to the board, please?
Okay, yes. Pam's attorney alluded to there being some sort of a problem amongst the neighbors. I'm not sure what he's referring to. Could you elaborate on that? I don't know of any problems.
I don't think that's important to our decision, sir. I don't know what it is either, but things happen. It doesn't matter. We're not going to consider it, and we're going to decide, so...
The fact that he brought it up is...
There's a history to everything, you know? I don't know what it is either. I don't want to know.
That's very wise. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I can speak briefly if you'd like.
I'd like, you know, take your time and tell us what you need. I do need your name and address.
My name is Edith Murphy. I live at 67 Hall Road. I'm against the variance. I had several thoughts while I was listening to the lawyer in favor of it, but there were two things that I thought about. One is that we've been there, I think, about 22 years, and in that time, the density or the lots that have been built have been many. At least 20 houses have gone up, a lot of which use our road. So when my husband and I drove up the road once when we were buying the house, Mr. Gillum stopped our car so a cat could cross, and it's not like that anymore. So I was thinking about that, and I just wanted to tell you kind of one harm that happened to me, perhaps as a consequence of the density. Three years ago, we heard a knock on our door, and a family that was visiting someone up on the hill stopped and said, "Did you know there's a dead dog in the road?" And it was a beautiful black dog, dead. It and its friend had escaped from a house and run up our road, and it was killed, and its doggy friend was, we rescued it, and the dog catcher came. It was very sad, and now I live in my house with my black dog, and my daughter's black puppy is visiting right now, and it's hard not to worry when the traffic is really fast. So we would love to have the variance denied so that we keep our lower-density neighborhood as low density as it can because we walk there, our animals, we walk our animals on leashes there, we watch the turkeys, the deer, et cetera. So if you had anything else you'd like me to say, I mean, if you have a question...
I appreciate your point of view. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name is Erin Carlin. I live at 15 Stage Road, which is directly across the street from the nonconforming parcel. We have lived in Chelmsford, well, my husband has been a life-long resident of Chelmsford, and he and I purchased our first house here in the Westlands neighborhood in 2004, and we purchased this house at the beginning of 2014. And our reason actually for moving from the Westlands down to South Chelmsford is that it has that more rural and pastoral quality. And we particularly selected this house after more than a year of searching because of the wooded lot across the street. And I obviously didn't do a good job researching it, but when I did look into it, I went, "Oh, okay, this house, the house on the corner of Parker, that's a whole one-some-odd-acre lot, so it's not able to be subdivided." And so I thought, "Okay, well, good. I'm so happy that for the rest of the time we live here, we get to look out over these beautiful woods." And it keeps that lovely quality in our neighborhood that I think we all really appreciate. And so I would say that, you know, really, the hardship to us is to lose that tree screen. It does create privacy, and I work in the design and construction industry, so I really do know what's involved in clearing a parcel to create a new house on it. And so there would be, for the time period of the construction, significant disturbance in our neighborhood while that house is being constructed, and no matter what kind of greenery they add to that parcel after the house is developed, it's not going to be what's there now, which provides our friends over on Drummer and our friends on Wells Fargo with lovely privacy that is really what we come to treasure in South Chelmsford over other areas of town where you benefit from having more commercial development, but you also have that additional busyness and kind of commercial quality. So we would really like it if the variance was denied so that we can retain qualities that we really love in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael Donahue, 11th Stage Road, living across the street from the Parker Road house. Lived there about over 40 years. I am the 66% of the acre that he was referring to. Everybody else on Stage Road, Wells Fargo Road, Jason, I think it's Jason, Justin Road, they all have about nine, 90% or more of an acre. Some have well over an acre. One of them has five acres. What I think he jury-picked, the lawyer, was Hall Road Extension. That's the only place I can think where they might have those small lots, which is behind Stage Road, as far as that goes. When we lived, when we moved there, it was only six houses on Old Stage Road. Of course, technology comes in, they had to change it to Stage Road because of 911. My house was on the corner lot. I was, loved it. I had woods behind me, woods beside me. We were locked in. It was fantastic. Privacy galore. I can't believe, I hope that the board will take one conforming lot and make them into two nonconforming lots. That doesn't make sense to me.
Technically, it is a nonconforming lot at this time, sir.
Okay, so we have two nonconforming lots, correct?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, just trying to keep things correct.
Okay, well, I would just, again, like to see this plan void and null. I don't think it adds anything to Stage Road neighbors, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure if proper notice was tendered, there'd be a lot more people like this that would be showing up.
Notice was tendered.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tyler Leeds, 51 Parker Road. I'll be really brief. I support a lot of the previous comments. I moved to Chelmsford about four years ago. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and another one along the way, due in March. And for us, one of the big appeals of South Chelmsford was the open space, and so, consistent with a lot of the previous comments, we respectfully request that the request on the table be denied. Thank you.
Karen Christensen, 66 Carlyle Street. These two lots, do they even total an acre of land?
I believe they would, yeah. I'm not, yeah, they would.
Just, just under an acre?
Let me see.
Even as all three combined, I believe it's still not considered.
Just under, 41.6.
With both combined?
Yes.
Is the town, isn't there a ruling that it's supposed to be an acre of land per home?
That is their request that they're looking for us to vote in favor of.
40,000.
It also said there's a flood plain. So which house floods? One, two, in between? What happens here?
I don't believe that is a...
Didn't it say flood plain on the, on the...
Aquifer maybe?
Don't be mistaken, that has not arisen in our... Do we have any conservation concerns, Mr. Housler? Maybe Mr. Flaherty could answer that?
No, it's not a flood plain. Not a team of flood plains.
Conservation, I put up on the board so you can see that it has no wetlands, no buffers anywhere near it.
Okay. So I guess the hardship issue, how is this a hardship for their client when they knew that the town requires an acre of land per home? You bought it knowing that, so how does this become a hardship? How is this a hardship for you when you knew the rule when you bought it? I think the town is and has in front of them a lot of projects that are overdeveloping the town of Chelmsford, not preserving enough green space, and I would definitely like to see the board vote this down.
Good evening. My name is Zick Rivera. I live at 17 Stage Road. When I bought my house, it was actually part of a very large lot. The owner originally had her house, which was very old, built a new one, which she intended to rent for a while, and then decided to sell. So when we bought it, she had approximately 100,000 or so square feet. And when I asked her, "Why do I have to buy 40,000 when I can, you know, the house is very well situated for 25,000?", she said, "No, that was the rule." So we had to carve out 40,000 square feet, actually 44,000 square feet. So now we find out, well, maybe that's not what you really have to do. You know, I'm situated with a half of my acreage, which is essentially useless because it's all woods. I can't do anything with it, but I had to buy it that way. And I think what is involved here is a question also of fairness. If we all have to abide by this rule, then we have to abide by the rule. The fact that, you know, additional houses are not going to impede traffic and all that is not correct. I mean, we've seen it. I moved there when there were only six houses on the road. Now there are 20, and believe me, the impact has been significant, more than significant. So we'd like to just not have any more houses in that area. Thank you.
My name's Leon Poria. I live at 26 Bryan Road, which is at the corner of Parker and Bryan, only a few hundred feet from Emily's home, and we've been there almost 55 years. And the reason we moved there is because it was in the middle of the woods, and they just finished building a new house right behind us after 50 years that is a nice conforming lot. It's a beautiful home, but the trees are gone. And, you know, when we look out, the birds are gone, and the other little animals are gone. Plus, I think, you know, if this were a straight case, I have no objection to people building on legal-sized lots, but it seems to me, in this case especially, that the reason why this is coming to be is not a hardship, at least as I envision what a hardship should be. Because if they were going to live there, that's one thing, but they're not going to live there. My understanding is it's speculation to sell stuff. So I think it's going to detract from the whole neighborhood by cutting trees down and by increasing the density of homes. So I would vote against it on those principles that I just mentioned. Thank you.
I'm going to read the letters, the legal notices, and I have several letters from other citizens that I will enter into the record here. I will give the comments a little break here. This'll take a little while, too. These are the legal notices. I am looking at the engineering. Please contact the sewer department to coordinate the sewer connection, 54 Parker Road. 54 Parker Road from the community development has no concerns. No comment. I don't know why that's changed. Center Water District has no concerns. The Board of Health has no concerns. The Fire Department has attached a letter, which I will read into the record. The Town of Chelmsford, the Zoning Board of Appeals, "Dear members of the board, the Fire Prevention Office has no concerns in the substance regarding this proposal put forth by the applicant. However, the applicant shall apply for and receive an address for any new service. Application may be made to the Town of Chelmsford 911 Committee and its chairperson, Town Clerk Tricia Druoz. This office would approve this plan with this condition. Respectfully, Captain Dan." Those are the legal notices. I have some letters as well. This is from Michael and Nancy Donahue, 11th Stage Road. Appeal Board members, having heard about the request for a variance for 54 Parker Road, if granted, would reduce the size of one conforming lot and one nonconforming lot into two nonconforming lots. I believe that this has proved to be opening the floodgates for other lots in the area to do the same. Presently, the lot size on Stage Road, one of the nonconforming lots are 0.66 of an acre, 100% of an acre, 0.95% of an acre, 100% of an acre, 1.28% of an acre, and 0.98% of an acre, 0.93% of an acre. Presently, the lot sizes on the Wells Fargo Road, a butter to the nonconforming lot, are 0.92% of an acre, 5.17% of an acre, 1.34% of an acre, 1.26% of an acre, 1.23% of an acre, and 0.93% of an acre. Presently, the lots on Justin Road completes the cul-de-sac on Stage Road, 1.17% of an acre, 0.95% of an acre, 1.18% of an acre. These two lots in question are approximately 1.71% of an acre and 0.43% of an acre. The house sits on 0.71 acre, so their intent is to decrease that lot to a nonconforming lot and add land to the other nonconforming lot, which will still be nonconforming. Where is the hardship, or is this just greed? My wife and I have lived on Stage Road for over 40 years. We purchased the property for the open spaces surrounding our house. If this request for a variance is approved, it would be like living in Lowell. I apologize to Lowell. I'm just reading. We should be nice here. It really is important. Where houses are right next to each other, we strongly request that you table this variance as we wish the area to remain as it is now. Open spaces between houses. Yours truly, Michael Donahue, Nancy Donahue, 11th Stage Road. To the Chelmsford Board of Appeals from Phyllis Del Vecchio, subject 54 Parker Road. I do not agree with the creation of two nonconforming lots at 54 Parker Road as proposed by Pam Vega of the same address. We have zoning lot requirements for a reason, and those lot size requirements should not be violated with variances unless there is a compelling reason to do so. There is no such compelling reason in this case, and I therefore ask you to vote no on this request for a variance. I live on 6 Green Valley Drive, within 100 to 200 yards of 54 Parker Road. As a Chelmsford taxpayer, I have vested interest in seeing that all of my neighbors abide by the zoning laws and that they do not squeeze new houses where they don't belong. There is absolutely no reason not to comply with our zoning... There is absolutely no reason not to comply with our zoning bylaws. Sincerely, Phyllis Del Vecchio, Six Green Valley Drive, Chelmsford, Mass. This is, uh, from Nicholas Del Vecchio. I do not agree with the creation of two non-conforming lots at Fifty-Four Parker Road as proposed by Pam Vega of the same address. We should have zoning lot size requirements for a reason, and those lot size requirements should not be violated with variances unless there is a compelling reason to do so. There is no such compelling reason in this case, and therefore I ask you to vote no on this request for a variance. I live on Six Green Valley Drive, within a hundred to two-hundred yards of Fifty-Four Parker Road. As a Chelmsford taxpayer, I have a vested interest in seeing that all my neighbors abide by the zoning bylaws, and that they do not squeeze new houses where they don't belong. There is absolutely no reason not to comply with our zoning bylaws. Sincerely, Nicholas Del Vecchio, Six Green Valley Drive. I have another one from C. Thomas Cristiano, subject Fifty-Four Parker Road. Please note that I do not agree with the creation of two non-conforming lots at Fifty-Four Parker Road as proposed by Pam Vega of the same address. It's the same-
It's sounding familiar, it's a form letter.
Yeah, it's the same letter. You can just read the names-
Signed by C. Thomas Cristiano, Six Drew Circle, Chelmsford, Mass. I have an additional form letter of the same form from Lee Anna Newmeyer of Three Drew Circle, Chelmsford, Mass. And it states her same, uh, feeling that this should not be done. Those are the letters that I have this evening. If anyone would like to respond to the letters or have further comment, uh, they are welcome. Mr. Housler has a response to the neighbor's concerns?
Um, very short and sweet, just to clarify a few points. Uh, one was that someone made the argument that, uh, the property was acquired with knowledge of the non-conformity. Um, the case of Lamb versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Taunton, the two thousand and ten case, directly addresses that whether you have knowledge or not is immaterial to your decision. Mr. Haverty can, I think he's aware of that decision. So let's, that's, you know, I don't mind having people raise relevant issues, but not issues just for the sake of trying to make a case. Let's deal with what's relevant. And what's also relevant is, I've heard a lot of people say that they enjoy the, the beauty of the, the trees and the, and the fact that it's undeveloped. But they are also not the ones that have been paying the taxes on that lot. They seem to be ignoring the fact that the client would have the right, without having to go before any board, to basically clearcut the lot. And hasn't done that. And instead is trying to add value to the, to both herself and the neighborhood by creating a use that's consistent with a home that is consistent, and not just clearcutting a lot. So it doesn't achieve the goals that a lot of the people were talking about, because if the relief is denied, there's a higher probability that the whole, entire lot could be clearcut, because they have no other choice. That's not a good thing for anybody. So I think that's why these kinds of cases and issues come before you, to weigh all those issues. And most particularly, what you heard were concerns about the general zoning district type of harms. But you didn't hear my privacy is upset because of, there isn't privacy issues here, we meet the setbacks. So respectfully, the density, the idea of the traffic, and my, my heart really did feel terrible about the person who came across a, a dog, which, I love dogs. Um, that's not relevant to this issue here. Adding a single-family house in this instance is not going to dramatically affect the traffic patterns and the density of the entire district, respectfully. We're not talking about adding traffic from Boston Road here. So respectfully, put all those things, I know that everybody's against, and that's not shocking to me, because that's what happens, but I ask you to use your judgment and your experience in assessing, did we meet the three criteria? And I haven't, I, no one's been able to argue to me so far, other than the generic, you have to follow the law. By definition, a variance is at odds with the law. We're not trying to do something unlawful, as suggested by Attorney Hall. We're trying to comply with the law by coming before the board. And asking you for relief from the law because it would be unjust not to give relief. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If you would approach the podium.
I know that, um, Mr. Hall represents us, but, um, we are a direct abutter. May I please speak?
Yes, you may.
Okay. My name is Nancy Fagan, and my husband's Paul Glielmi. And we are at Sixteen Stage Road, which is directly to, next to that lot. Can you bring up that last image that had a proposed house on it, please? Okay, the proposed house, um, may I walk over-
You certainly can.
Our house is right here, right here. This has a twenty-five-foot easement to our property line. So our house, and we just built a beautiful Brady sunroom, glass sunroom on the back of our house. This area right here is the highest topography in the area. If this house is built, they will have direct view right into the back of our house. And if they choose to build that house more than two stories, which is allowable, to three stories, they will be able to see into our bedroom. Now, that is my considerable discussion as far as a hardship is concerned. I think it is gross to have that type of closeness to another property when nobody else in the neighborhood, none of the other abutters, will have that experience. We will have to live with that for the rest of our, our lives, that we're in that house. And we have, as was brought out, spent more than a half a million dollars on our house, plus considerable improvements to that house. This is a huge direct effect on us. We will lose, I don't care how many trees you can plant, you're gonna have to plant trees that are fifty, sixty, seventy feet tall to be able to not be looking down on our property. We will have a terrible inquisition as far as we're concerned. So it will be a very large imposition on us. That's all I need to say. Thank you very much.
We can address both of those concerns. We'd stipulate that there would be no more than two stories to give you the privacy you're looking for with respect to height, with respect to screening. We'd be more than happy to do the plantings. And we could make that an obligation, that they be mature plantings, so that they get an advantage to give themselves additional privacy. The other piece I might add is, when you build a piece, uh, when you add to your own home that, as we say, encroaches, it gets closer to the sideline, to the setbacks, you're somewhat inviting potential risk of your own privacy, that, you know, so some of that is actually self-created. And I ask, and then again, the last, I'll try to ignore the comments in the back. I apologize, I got distracted. The other issue is, um, we can do, meet the side yard setbacks here, so that shouldn't be an issue. And last but not least, this particular, uh, abutter, director abutter, who we did reach out to, my understanding is, you know, if the property is clearcut, they're not gonna have any privacy at all. So it's a balancing act. And just, again, it's, this is the whole issue of, we're saying no because we're saying no because we're saying no. And I get that the law doesn't automatically allow it, I understand that. But at the same time, the consequences can often be much greater or worse than what is being proposed, and I don't think that's in anybody's best interests. We would be happy to continue to work to try to eliminate those concerns of, of those particular abutters, because I do think they are the ones that we should be most concerned about in terms of this development. I've said that since day one, and we agree. We can meet some of it tonight like that, and we'd be open to trying to reach an agreement with them to address their concerns, other, but would be in contemplation of allowing the variance. Try to address your issues.
Did you folks get a variance for your sunroom?
We don't need a variance for our sunroom.
I'm just asking the question, ma'am.
No, we have all the appropriate permits.
I'm sure you did. No, a, a variance would allow you to build closer to your property line than is allowed. And I was just curious whether your sunroom fell into-
We didn't build closer to our property line. All we did was, was we had an existing porch, and we just converted that into a sun porch.
Okay, just for clarification.
If, if anything, we moved it a little bit further back, but we did not, uh, go any closer to that property line. Or we added three feet towards the back of our, our property.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening?
Hi, I'm Anne Monahan. I live at Fifty-Five Parker Road, so I'm across the street from Fifty-Four. Um, this lot is half the size of what it should be. Is that?
I believe it's less than that, ma'am.
Um, I'm all for bending when it's closer, but when it's half, I, that's my only reason. It's half the size of what we're supposed to be doing going forward, and it's half. So that's a little bit more than bending a couple feet or doing something. So I think it's just really changing how we put rules. Rules can sometimes be meant to be bent, but I just think that's just, half is not the standard we want to do in Chelmsford. Not just that neighborhood. So, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, I'm gonna look for a motion to close the public hearing?
Um, Brian, I have another idea. Why don't I motion to continue the public hearing, and we can go take a look at it? Would you like to do that?
Uh, I have seen it. I don't know if the rest of the board has. Have you been there and seen it?
I've been on Parker, but I haven't really analyzed this area, so.
Do you think a sidewalk would be helpful?
Well, it depends what the board wants to do.
I don't, I don't, I, I did go by and see it, though, I don't, I don't know, uh-
Yeah, I, I know.
Who's gonna benefit from this?
Okay, then cancel my, uh, motion to continue.
You could go and ask for the, um, site to be staked out as to where the house would be proposed. That's something no one's seen.
That's something you feel you would benefit from?
It, it would also give the applicant additional time to discuss potential screening or other measures that could allay the concerns of his neighbors.
I do not have any problem with that. I just wanna make sure it's for the benefit of all.
Yeah.
Uh, I will, uh, not look for a motion. It can, we'll leave the hearing open for input after we-
Motion to continue.
Can we ask the applicant?
Have the applicant stake out the lot.
Permission to, uh, do a sidewalk and ask if we could have the, uh, corners of the house staked out for viewing?
The engineer is willing to do so. Uh, the owner's representative agrees. We'd ask that whatever time you're gonna go out for the sidewalk, we'd be present, uh, because we'd wanna be there. And we invite particularly the neighbors to join us on that measure, um, because they are the ones we are most concerned about, quite frankly. Um, if anybody else does wish to, to go, they're invited to show up at the same time that the board sets its sidewalk for. And we just ask that if they do walk on the property, they do so at their own risk, that if someone gets hurt, it's their problem, not ours. But we're more than happy to have someone join to add to the discussion and get a full discussion of it, if that's okay with the board.
We will be meeting on February first. Uh, I don't think that will be early enough to-
Too much snow.
Too much time?
Well, respectfully, it may not be that much snow over the next two days.
I'm thinking of going, uh, prior to the meeting, but I, I don't think it'll be really light enough to have a good thing at six o'clock. So we wanna look at a Saturday? Does that work for everyone?
Can't do Saturday mornings.
How soon could you do it, Doug? The staking?
I, I have to defer to the engineer.
Trick of the afternoon, as it gets dark, so really-
Yeah, no, I mean, like, at-
Mr. Flaherty says he could stake it out next week, weather permitting, I'm presuming, even though he has a direct link to the man upstairs. That's a second good thing.
He actually likes it.
We could do the thirteenth, the twentieth, or the twenty-seventh. Uh, Nancy has an issue with the morning, but I don't know if, does that mean eleven o'clock is okay, or noon?
Noon o'clock, uh, from noon to clock.
Noon o'clock. That's a new time, sure.
Noon on is fine.
On the thirteenth? Would that be enough time for Mr. Flaherty?
In two days.
This Saturday?
This, this Saturday. Want another week?
No, it'd be, no, it'd be another week out. The thirteenth won't work, but the twentieth.
Twentieth.
Can't do the twentieth.
Well, the twentieth is a problem. The twenty-seventh?
Well, is Sunday's out?
Not for me. If the board is willing to go, I'm willing to go. I don't, I don't have a problem with the-
I like Sundays.
Twenty-first in the morning.
Twenty-first, Sunday in the morning.
Okay, we've got an idea for the twenty-first, Sunday, uh-
May I address this, uh, proposal briefly, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, uh, stress that I believe the real focus is on the lot itself, which my comments are on. And I'd like to point out again, Section Ten of the law that says this board only has the power, after a public hearing, to grant a variance based on soil conditions, shape, or topography. Those are the only three things under the law that you can grant a variance on, and you have to make specific findings in regards to which one of those gives the authority to grant a variance. There's been no evidence submitted at all tonight by anyone in regards to soil conditions, shape, or topography. This is simply area, and it's half the size of what's required, uh, by your zoning bylaws. So I would submit to you, and my clients object to it, a staking and a sidewalk is completely irrelevant to the law and will not solve this issue one bit. Thank you.
Mr. Haverty, uh-
So I, I do agree that, that there are three bases in which this board can, can make a finding to support the grant of a variance. And one is lot shape, which certainly you can tell from a plan, so that doesn't require a view. Um, the other two are soil conditions and topography, which certainly can be observed when someone takes a view of a property. Um, I, I think it would be helpful maybe to get a little more time to review the issue of whether or not the variance can be granted, um, simply because of a deficiency of lot area. There was a statement made tonight that says that the case law states that a, a variance cannot be based solely on the issue of a deficiency of lot area. Um, I've been doing some review of, of some of the case law, and I think it leans heavily in that direction, but it's not quite absolute. Um, so I think it would be helpful to have a little more time to know what exactly the areas are in which the board can concentrate its decision. Um, because if lot shape is not a viable, um, basis for a finding, then you're limited to simply, uh, soil conditions and topography.
Okay, that complicates that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to read those cases into the record, too, to support what I said.
Certainly. Sure, Mr. Haverty has noted them.
The first one that I, uh, mentioned in my comments, and it's a direct quote from the case, "A lot lacking sufficient area is not eligible for a variance based solely on this circumstance." And that's Brusey versus Board of Appeals of Hingham, Hingham, Three-Four-Three, Mass., four-twenty-one, nineteen sixty-two. Additionally, this one is Mitchell versus Board of Appeals of Revere, Twenty-Seven, Mass. Appeals Court, One-One-One-Nine, at page One-One-Two-O, nineteen eighty-nine. Where hardship arises solely from the fact that the lot is too small to qualify as a building lot under the zoning ordinance, Section Ten gives the Board of Appeal no authority to grant a variance. And that's exactly the situation you have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still discussing a date?
Uh, yes, I think we're discussing the need as well, so, uh, do we feel we should go and look? You don't, you don't feel so, Jimmy?
We can go on our own, just do a drive-by.
I've been by, so I, I don't think necessarily the location is gonna be all that helpful to me. But I am in favor of continuing it, uh, in search of more information as to whether area is indeed a viable, uh, tool to, to grant a variance for. So I would suggest that we, uh, continue the hearing without closing it to the public uh, until February first, I believe, two thousand and eighteen?
How, how long do you need, Paul? Because we do have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth of this month.
Yeah?
Yeah. The January-
I'm gonna get a raise.
Fourth meeting that we never got to have.
Uh, I won't need that long. It would be helpful, actually, if the parties could brief the matter as well.
The parties could what?
Brief the issue of the, um, the issue of whether or not you can actually find, uh, for a variance.
You'd like to hear testimony from the attorneys regarding that?
Oh, correct. I mean, so I'm, I'm looking at the case law, and again, I was not asked to look at that issue prior to tonight, so I have not researched it coming in. so I have not researched it coming in. But a number of cases do state that it's not something that should be granted. And then there are a couple of cases that say, in ordinary circumstances, it should not be the basis. So, I would certainly like the time myself to actually get a definitive answer on this. And I do think it would be helpful if both attorneys that have spoken tonight could actually provide a brief giving their position on the matter.
It could, Mr. Chairman, if the statute is like crystal clear on this, where it only gives three possible reasons.
An attorney, huh? What I'm asking for is, there are three possibilities listed in forty-eight, section ten. The case law may suggest that lot shape is not appropriate as one of the categories with regard to this. So, I want to know if I should be informing the board, if you are making findings, do not look at the issue of lot shape. You may only, if you want to grant, you may only look at the issues of topography and soil conditions. So, the question is whether or not one of those three potential bases has already been eliminated or whether there is an extraordinary measure in which it can still be reviewed. And that, that's all I'm looking at in this.
My point is, you know, resources are scarce. There's been no testimony in regards to topography or so.
Understood, and the board members are gonna go out and, and take a view of the property to see if they can observe anything so that they have that information as well. If, you're not required to submit a brief, that certainly, the board can't tell you, you have to submit something. I am going to look at the issue independently as well.
When is the next, what do you need? Do you schedule that for first?
So, with that, I'll look for a motion to February first, I think.
Yeah.
A regularly scheduled meeting, two thousand eighteen. Would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue on fifty-four Parker Road to a next meeting on, not a next meeting, a second meeting on February first.
Second, second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimes?
Thank you very much, members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have twenty-six Glen Ave, lot twelve and lot eleven.
Frank, we take five?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Very good idea.
Let the room clear out.
This was a continued one, right? I, I got a question for you.
Come on. Three cups.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
The one we just heard, right, how, if you had voted tonight, would I have voted on that?
Yes, you're sitting, because we, we would need a unanimous decision on that, and you would have voted.
I say, and four is unanimous, feel four is a quorum, because you got five voters, right?
Right, we have five voting, but four, with four, you cannot have any dissension. It has to be a majority, it has to be a supermajority, is that what they call that?
So, if you have a, a meeting on the fourth, I mean, the first, it has to be just the four that were...
I could put this up here.
That's fine.
Excuse me.
Well, you know what? I have to run down to my desk. Let me, um...
So technically, on this one, if I had listened to tapes, could I vote on this twenty-one, six Glen Ave?
So, if you were at the first one yesterday?
No, it's, well, oh, is this the second one now?
This is the second one, yes.
I was at, I was at the one...
I have, I have Jerry qualified the vote on this.
I was at the last one on this.
Yes.
She told me I couldn't vote at that time.
That's only because...
Gotcha.
That's what you're there for.
Gotcha.
Okay.
That's why alternates exist.
Exactly. I'm gonna run downstairs and email.
I sent the D R P.
I'll be right back.
And listen to the tape, you would get to vote.
Right.
But if they do...
Then I don't get to vote. Gotcha. So, what does it take? It's five members. What, what, if there's five...
Three to two, but if there's only four members, it becomes a, it becomes a supermajority?
I gotcha. So, there's only, there's only, there's only three tonight, so then the next meeting would be two other people?
There's four tonight.
No, I mean, I'm talking about regular voters, not alternates. It's five.
Right, but an alternate just doesn't vote until he's needed, which is now.
Yeah, but there's five regular voters, and then there's two alternates, right? Okay, so, so, so at the next meeting, the two other regulars could show up.
Correct.
But if, if one shows up, then...
Jackie's gonna have to recuse herself.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm getting it.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot, and you didn't get your book yet, huh?
Which one? The open meeting? Yeah, no, I haven't. I've been meeting it. It's a lot of stuff. I got the book that you, you know, you took away from me, so I had to go get it. So, on that last page, Paul's gonna do research to upcase lot or understand.
It is, and it is, and Mr. Hall is right. It's, it's a definite, I mean, I, you know, I, I respect that, that...
Yeah, I mean, when you read the, the general thing, it says that the board is responsible for keeping the nature. One of the things that wasn't brought up, that we're, our goal is to keep the nature of the town the way, you know, it's meant to be.
Yeah, there were, there were concerns that it opened the floodgates.
They're gonna discuss against roads or...
I'm just saying, it just says, it's, it's, it's subjective enough, yeah, it can be interpreted, but I don't say, you know, the nature of the town.
I mean, I, I try to understand what is, is legally correct.
Right.
If that's at all possible, if I can't determine it, then I know. Carlina Minnit here, and...
She's, she went to print out the decision for seventy-three Dalton, so you gotta sign it.
Are we doing Glen Ave? What are we doing now?
We are gonna hear testimony on twenty-six Glen Ave.
Yeah, okay. I did go by this place, by the way.
Just waiting on Carlina Minnit, Doug.
Oh, you did?
Did you?
The twenty-six Glen?
Yeah.
I've been before, I haven't gone specifically.
It's so freaking warm in here, actually, God, what we've got. Hey, that's, that's what it is.
This is the last one we're doing today?
Yeah, this'll be it.
You guys have it to take out delivery here?
That would be, that would make this a lot more taller. I can't really talk to it anymore.
Is, is your husband an attorney as well?
Out in Milwaukee, so, this is his, like, business.
Christmas.
Oh, it's hot, it's hot.
Usually are.
Right.
It's kind, it's kind of these sneakers.
Nice of me to get this for myself.
That's, uh, yeah, honestly, I never heard what they did, that was never in another word. And I wanna ask, but I don't think I'll be doing myself any favors, you know?
Is Charlie gone?
He just walked out.
He's gonna go down to the brick house for a cold one.
There's your decision.
Wait until I even wanna sign those, that is, uh, fine by me.
So, I wanna read this one, 'cause it's highlighted from Pam.
Okay. So, the signature age? Is this the other signature? Well, there's a space that this, uh, the Board of Appeals voted...
The three to nothing.
Oh, three to, okay.
Yeah, just fill it in.
It says, but the signature's below, but there's only a signature on it for myself. Fine. It's a single copy. I don't know if there's more.
Hey, can you hold that for me just a minute?
What's up?
Trying to steal this right here.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Where's this one? Oh, okay, and they're representing a butter?
Yeah.
Hmm, interesting. There's new information from the last time?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, what's it, David? January ninth.
We'll open the continued request for a variance for twenty-six Glen Ave, lot twelve and lot eleven. We have some new information here. Mr. Hauser, have you had a chance to review Attorney, is it Nat Brown? Is it Attorney Brown here this evening?
No, she's not here. She, uh, was scheduled to be here on fourth, but had a conflict tonight, so it's Pamela Brown.
Okay.
I haven't received anything.
Would you like a moment to review this?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Not that it really should matter, but, you know.
I'll give you my crap, you say?
I, I got another one. I got two.
Thank you.
No, it didn't.
No, she said she...
Yeah, yeah, she didn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Attorney Page, are you?
That's, she referenced that. For sake of the day, I don't know.
I see. This is like an education, a tutorial?
Yeah.
I see. And this is like a state one?
Well, she said she teaches a class.
Oh. Interesting.
A couple times a year, during these opportunities, they'll come up to take these, uh, day lawn programs and get, get educated on some of them.
Oh, cool, does town pay for that?
Yes, they do. Often it would be embarrassment issue, but they would pay you for them, yeah.
Oh, so do they let me know when they're coming up or doing?
Typically, you get an email, and it'll say that this opportunity is available.
Well, that's great.
You can schedule it, go, and, and you can talk with them, but I think typically, you would pay your way and then be reimbursed by the town.
Oh, that's really nice.
I'll let you know, Jerry, they come up frequently.
Oh, cool.
Attorney Howser's ready.
Pardon?
I think Attorney Howser is ready.
Whenever the board is.
Yeah, I just wanted to get through the last of it.
Okay.
Have you, have you observed it, Doug, maybe you can give us your thoughts on it?
Well, uh, let me just point out a few inconsistencies or misstatements of the law. One, and I'll quote from her letter. "The applicant is not a longtime owner occupant of the parcel, he's a developer in the business who knew or should have known that the lot could not be divided." That's on page, uh, two of the submission. And I just gave you the, in the last hearing, I'm gonna read it to you for this hearing for purposes of your record. Mass case law, Lamb versus zoning Board of Appeals of Taunton, seventy-three Mass Appeals Court five thirteen at two thousand and ten. And this is the holding of the, the Appeals Court. "We see nothing in General Law's Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, the variance standard, for our cases that inclines us to establish a per se rule excluding those who knowledgeably purchased non-conforming properties from zoning relief." I.e., it's your discretion to, it's not black letter law. What Attorney Brown is sta- stating here is not accurate. Unless she hasn't read the case. And I attribute much more to that to her, she's a very accomplished attorney, somebody who I generally respect, I think she's just plain wrong. And I'm supporting that through a case of two thousand and ten. Other than that, we gave you all the reasons why we hit all the variance standards last time, so I don't wanna repeat the record. And, um, I'm certainly, I think, more than willing to, uh, you, the board went out to take a look, I don't know if you have particular questions as a result of your site visit? Happy to answer those, I have the applicant here with me, and the engineer with me. And we think it almost stands for itself about uniqueness and the size, and in fact, there's no other lot with that kind of frontage. Fact that there are two separate titles to it, you know, all, there aren't all lots similar to that in that entire neighborhood. So, does the board have any questions for me as a result of their sidewalk?
You guys have any questions with Mr. Howser, or, or viewing?
If not, I'd be happy to listen to whatever the abutters have to say. Thank you.
I think, uh, this falls under the very same track that we were tracking on Parkerville Road. I think I would, I'd like to ask, uh, Town Council, and I don't know the process for this, but I'd like an opinion on, uh, whether in fact, the area, um, applies to a variance.
Well, and, and again, the question is whether or not you can look at the issue of the lot shape, but I don't think that's as significant in this matter. The lot shape is not particularly unusual. Certainly, it's similar to the ones that are directly abutting it. Um, whereas the Parker Road one is certainly a less traditional shape of a lot. Um, you still then would have to go through the other criteria, which is whether there are soil conditions or topography that would support the granting of a variance. And it has to be directly related to the hardship that is being claimed by the applicant.
Which, as we established, can be financial.
It can be, but that financial hardship has to be related to the, the standards under the variance.
This was when, when I was trying to find that definition before, I was understanding of, that the financial hardship did not apply in a variance if you couldn't meet the standard of lot shape, topography, um, or the third.
It has to be tied to one of those three standards, it has to be tied to lot shape, soil conditions, or topography. Those are the three bases in which a board can base the issuance of a variance. Um, but in addition to that, you also have to have that hardship. And the hardship is financial or other, it has to be a substantial hardship. So they all, they all, it's interrelated. Having, having a financial hardship alone is insufficient. It has to be a financial hardship that is related to lot area, I mean, I'm sorry, lot, uh, shape, soil conditions, or topography.
I might respectfully disagree in part, just to point out to the board, there is a, the shape is a diff, there is difference here with shape. Yes, it's rectangular. Most of the others are what I would call generally square. Um, and that's, the most obvious is from the subdivision plan. Please take a look, how all those lots were laid out. Almost every single one, hundred feet by a hundred feet. This lot is incredibly unique and its shape is different. It has two hundred feet of frontage, none of these other lots have two hundred feet of frontage. That's based on the shape. Number two, as, together, it's, it's twenty thousand square feet. None of the other lots, there are lots with twenty thousand square feet, but they don't have the frontage. So, shape here is both uniqueness and shape for the hardship. Because this is a separate taxable parcel again. So it goes back to the area requirements we just had in the other hearing. So that's where you may interpret the idea of shape differently in this particular context. But still, it generally meets, you know, all the other setback requirements and every other part, but, but, you know, it hits all the frontage areas of that area, of that neighborhood. Same issues with density, additional house is not gonna make a dramatic change to that district in that part of the neighborhood. And remember that the RB district, by definition, every, almost every single house in that entire neighborhood doesn't comply with zoning. And really, what the problem is here is that the zoning for that area is inappropriate, which is why you're getting all these requests. Because what's on the ground doesn't match up with what, the reality doesn't match the bylaw. They should never have been forty thousand square foot lots applied to a neighborhood that was pre-existing like this. So, it's, that's what we've...
I mean, there's not, there's not, uh...
That's all I'm saying.
There are even twenty thousand, I, I...
You get my point, that's all, thanks.
So, we, we wind up going back to the issue of whether or not there is a prohibition for a board to even consider lot shape when we're talking about a lot area deficiency. Um, which again, is not something the board had previously asked me to research, and they have not coming into tonight, but the cases that I've looked at have again suggested, if there isn't a strict prohibition, there is a very, very strong disfavoring, and it's only in very, very unique circumstances where it could be allowed.
I will certainly, uh, take testimony this evening from anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this. Uh, but I think I'm, I'm gonna ask if it's possible to have some definitive answer for February first, and with the intention of continuing this. Uh, just for clarity, if that is...
When was, I, I think if we're looking at continuing this, we do have to consider whether or not we're running close to the hundred day period in which the board is required to act. When was this initially filed?
I believe it was, when was the first filed, it was November, filed in November?
I've got a November seventh date on a, on a letter here.
What was the date, sir?
November seventh.
A hundred days would be November, February, March tenth? Um, I'll do it on the calendar, that's a better...
Well, we're at about sixty now.
Seventh of January.
We're at about sixty now, so you, you could continue.
So we would have to act at the next meeting, I, I would feel much better understanding this, I do not feel I do. Whether the area is suitable to issue a variance or not.
Brian, I have a little story.
February fifteenth, Brian, would be the deadline.
Luke, we'll be going, we'll be going on for a second, Mr. ...
I have a little story about this, can I tell it?
Absolutely.
All right, um, when I first got on the planning board, that was many, many years ago, I can't even remember. I think it was nineteen ninety-eight. And I was talking to this lawyer, and, uh, he was brilliant, I will not name his name, he's since retired. He was very, very big. Good enough. So anyways, we're out in the hallway talking, 'cause I couldn't sit on something that was a butter. And I go, "Mr. Lawyer, what can I do when I'm, I'm a planning board member?" He said, "You know what, Charlie? You can say whatever you want, you can do whatever you want, except there's one thing you can't do." I go, "Jeez, what's that?" So he, he was serious, this was all serious, he goes, "Charlie, you can't take a gun out and shoot somebody, I don't think the town would, would stand for that. But you can do anything else you want." So, in that resp, that is a preface. I'd like to go to this Glen Ave. And, and in my mind, this, this is all wrong, we have a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot, and we're making another non-conforming lot. It's, it, it, it doesn't make sense in my mind. Um, and it, um, in, in the other case, I have just a little point, is if the zoning is wrong here, change the zoning. I mean, it's, it's, zoning is a, is a, is a living entity, just change it if you don't like it. And, um, and I'd be more than happy to vote for it if the zoning was changed. Thank you.
So can other people speak, or, like, are you allowing?
No.
Oh, yes ma'am, yes, no, you're welcome to come. No guns allowed at the table. My Charlie's going with all this, but, uh...
Charlie being Charlie.
Um, so yeah, we have no letters, we'll, we'll open this up, uh, to, to the audience to speak, anyone that would like to is welcome to. Just your name and address, please.
Sarah Salvi, twenty Glen Ave. Um, I think the applicant's attorney alluded to the fact that they have the frontage requirement, requirements, which Pamela Brown has pointed out here, that they will not have the frontage requirements once the lots are split.
I, I believe it is...
I, they were reviewing that just before you came up?
Okay.
So that's...
At, at this point, he has two hundred feet of frontage, which allows that to be a lot. His point, I believe, was that there's no other lot constructed now that has that much footage in the neighborhood, if you would.
Okay.
Just for clarity, I think.
Oh, feel free.
So, this lot right here, tried to do pretty some, pretty much similar to the same thing, they have frontage here and here. Kindness was denied by the board in nineteen ninety-five to zero. I wrote that to you guys last time, were you?
Right.
Yep.
Um, and the other thing that I wanted to say is, um, he also wanted to know why people are here. Um, the reasons why people wanna say no, do they just wanna say no to say no? No, we're here because, as you can clearly see, this is wrong, it's against the law, and there's no reason why the law should be overturned in this case, and a variance should be granted. There's, it was clearly not proven that a variance should be granted. So that's why we're here, because it's just, it's not right. It's, it has nothing to do with, I mean, sure, we're gonna lose privacy and all that, but that's not why we're here, arguing against this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir, your name and address, please?
Muff Alharbi, five B Street. And Charlie, I have a story like yours.
No guns.
I, I have exactly the same situation here, in my lot, I live, uh, across the street from this lot. I have twenty thousand, uh, square, you know, two lots with separate, two separate deeds, two separate taxes. And from ninety-one until ten years later, I applied every two years to, uh, for a buildup of lot, and they rejected it, the board rejected it as detrimental to the, to the Chompsford and to the neighborhood, even though I have one hundred percent agreement from my neighbors. So with the moral of the story, I would like some consistency. And, uh, ten years later, I still, they still rejected it, because I have to wait two years between each rejection. So, um, fairness is the name of the game here. That's all I have to say.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Curry, and I live at ten B Street, I'm one of the abutters, and, um, just for the record, I did not receive, my husband and I did not receive a certified letter, Colleen, Colleen knows, and the town manager wrote a letter of apology for that. Um, so I have some questions, and for my own understanding, and for some points, and I appreciate what you said, because it also appears, just on reading things, particular to the variance, in terms of hardship, just to repeat, just to say, for the record, for myself, um, I don't understand the hardship, because this is not a case where the people living on the property want to continue to, to live there, or even sell them, the house themselves. This is a developer that actually has some people now, they sold it to some people, it's under contract. And so, it doesn't seem, from the face of it, just in terms of hardship, what is the hardship? They obviously sold the property, they have money, it looks to me like they're trying to make more money, I understand that. But if we're trying to prove hardship, what is that hardship? And then, to reiterate, I also don't understand, I don't see any topography or soil, um, shape, anything. So I'm, I'm agreeing here for the record, and on this, for the sake of the abutters at ten B Street. The other question I wanted to ask, so, does anyone wanna answer that, in terms of hardship, or are we all wondering the same thing?
I think they've asked Town Council to look into...
Well, ultimately, determining whether or not there is a, a hardship, and whether that hardship is related to one of the three bases is under Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, is a finding that the board is going to have to make at the end of the process. Um, they've certainly heard a lot of testimony, both from the applicant and, and from the neighbors, as to whether or not there is an actual hardship and whether or not it's related, but ultimately, it's the board's determination. What I had discussed with the board is that one of those prongs, those three prongs as to which you can base your hardship, is, the question is whether or not it's even applicable. Whether or not it is something the applicant has available to them to show that they have hardship. However, if the board's determination is that they don't see that hardship, irrespective of whether or not they can consider lot shape as a hardship, that, that's your determination, if you, if you wanna make a finding tonight that there is no hardship related to lot shape, then that's your finding to make, and it's, it's irrelevant as to whether I tell you that you can base it on lot shape or not, if you find the lot shape is not sufficient, you know, as a factual basis.
And not only are we okay with lot shape, what was the factor is the area is a dimensional requirement or not.
Right, and, and the question is, can you use an unusual lot shape to support a, a claim? And the question is, can you use an unusual lot shape to support a claim of hardship based upon lot area? And the case law, again, is not looking great in that regard, but I didn't quite see an absolute prohibition in the case law that I read. It made it seem like it's very unlikely that that would be a successful route, if this ever wound up in any sort of litigation. But I think before you get to the point of determining whether or not you can use lot shape to support a finding in favor of a hardship, you need to first make a determination as to whether you see the lot shape as supporting a claim of hardship. Because if you find that lot shape isn't unusual enough, in your opinion, to constitute a hardship, then it doesn't matter or not whether it's something you could make that finding, because you're making the finding that it is not.
How are you defining hardship?
Hardship under the statute is defined as financial or otherwise, and it has to be directly related to those three factors: based on lot shape, based upon the soil conditions, and based upon the topography.
So if you do a town council opinion, legal opinion, that is a legal opinion that's written out and then presented to this board, as well as to the abutters?
It would not be my making a finding as to whether or not I think they've established whether or not they have a hardship or whether they don't. Because that is literally the factual finding that the board needs to make as part of its decision. Any legal opinion that I'm going to provide is going to be an opinion that states whether or not this is a valid basis for making a finding. Can you actually look at lot shape and say that you have insufficient lot area based upon your lot shape? And that's a hardship in which you can grant a variance? That would be a determination I could make. But if the board doesn't feel like that there is enough to actually make that finding irrespective of whether they can, then it becomes a moot point.
In addition, just as with the other case, we also will say that, as the neighbors concerned about safety, and I know this isn't in legal terms, particularly the variance, but just on our behalf, I want to show you the picture. This is how busy it gets. It is not just a quiet side street. And it's... We have at least 100 children in the neighborhood, and it can be dangerous there where the... Sorry.
They're the ones that are going to make the decision.
I've been there many a time.
Yeah. I don't know if you've been there when the traffic has been there.
All the time.
So it's not a quiet side street many hours of the day. And then just on the record, is there any... I just wanted to check, is there any conflict of interest in terms of... Has anybody worked with these developers before?
No, ma'am?
No?
I don't understand the nature of the question. Are you asking if a board member...
Yes, since everybody's voting... Since this is the voting board, is there anybody that has any construction interests that would have worked with this developer before?
The board's obliged to state that at the beginning of a hearing.
Was that?
The board would be obliged to state that.
Okay. I mean, I haven't been to these hearings, so I don't know. And I'm just trying to cover all bases, you know? And I have looked at different backgrounds of the people here, so I just was wondering. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to decide whether the lot shape is such that a variance should be considered? And then if that is the case, continue this until we understand better if area applies to the variance at hand?
You asking me? I'm all set. I'm all set to vote tonight.
I think this one's a little different than the other one. So I'm okay to vote tonight on this.
I'm going to... Do you want to say your name and address, sir?
Roland Mainville, 78 Westview Road. I'm the applicant. Appreciate you guys looking at this. Couple things. This is what we do for a living. What we...
Also, I look at, when I buy stuff like this, I look at what was intended when this was all developed. And the intent, obviously, was to have lots this size with the frontage that they have.
Because the woman that I bought the house off bought this lot after she bought her house, should not really have a lot to do with what the intent was in the very beginning when this lot... When this subdivision was done. The gentleman that spoke before me, that has two lots, and he's done his thing, if that's what the intent was, that's what the intent was. I'm not really stepping on any toes or anything like that. But soil samples, if they need to be done, we can do lot... The lot shape, perfect shape or same shape as the whole neighborhood, we can do soil samples. We can do that kind of stuff if you want. But common sense and intent, when the project was originally done, needs to come into play. We're asking for permission to do this. Some people have done stuff on the street, going to ask for forgiveness, because they've gone and think that some land is not their land, and built stuff on their land, and fenced in land that's not their land. We want to do things the right way. I've been doing this for quite a long time, over 30 years. Past president of the Home Builders, life director of the Home Builders. We do this for a living. We do a nice job. 1993, I got approved here in the town of Chumsford to do 15 units on Tingsborough Road. The name of the project was Two Lins Condominiums. That was a very successful project. Haven't done a lot of other building in Chumsford. I'm a carpenter by trade, done a lot of work in Chumsford, done a lot of stuff in Lowell, Drakeett, things all around, Palom, New Hampshire. So been around a long time. Energy Star, it's not Energy Star anymore, because the energy codes are so great today, you have to go above and beyond the Energy Star. But we have 45 homes rated. So we do a good job. Intent was to have a house there. We hope to have a house there. And that's really all I got to say.
I'm confused. When you bought... When you bought... You're the owner.
I own it at this time.
And when you bought it, you knew that it was non-conforming? And yet you bought it hoping that... No, that's not correct?
Doesn't matter. What I cited to you... What I cited to you is the case law. Mr. Howser, you can correct me. It doesn't matter what his knowledge, whether it was conforming or not conforming. That's not relevant to your decision.
That's accurate.
The land case is directly on point.
That is correct, that he is in the same position as anybody else that comes in front of this board, looking for a variance. The fact that he purchased the property as it currently exists does not prohibit him from seeking a variance in the manner that anybody else that owns property...
I got it.
Mr. Chairman, after hearing the various points, and before the hearing has closed, my client is going to withdraw his application.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yes.
Okay. I think we need a motion to accept that, isn't it?
Correct.
I have a motion to accept the withdrawal.
I second it.
By Charlie, seconded by Jeremy. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're just going to talk prejudice.
It's easy.
They're not doing it so... If we had voted, they would have to wait two years to bring this back. So now they could come back next week and say, "We're doing this, but we're doing it differently."
That's for building.
It's kind of like a fourteen, but not really.
Interesting, I don't want to do it anymore. We're walking away. And they have that right.
Yeah, okay.
They have a single lot that if they choose to split...
Okay.
What else do we have?
So nothing really happened. Nothing happened that changed.
So just to clarify, do we all... We're all aware we have a meeting on the 25th?
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock this time.
I wonder if I needed for that one, or anything on that?
No, this is the regular scheduled applications that I got for January 1st, but we didn't finish up December, so we carried it over to the January 1st hearing. We do have four applications that are coming in for February 1st, regular applications. And hopefully, after February 1st, I'm hoping to get the... Back to the once-a-month schedule.
Okay.
I think we would all enjoy that.
So it's the 20th and...
25th and the 1st. They're two weeks away, because there happens to be an extra week like this month, so...
You're killing my social life.
Jerry, you have to come, because this is... These are all new.
I know. I just said you're killing my social life.
Brian, I'd just like to say, too, that the next meeting, I'm going to have more stories.
This is going to be a recurring theme now?
I will not bring a gun. Is this a new career?
We'll put it on the agenda. Board of Appeals hearing, and Charlie, we're just story time.
It's story time.
Did you get a copy of the story?
You know, when you... Yeah, it's in here. It's very interesting.
If you got a chance, take some time.
A little different.
Can we...
I don't know. We're talking about threatening people with a gun.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn.
We'll have a motion to close.
We'll have a second on the close. A discussion. All papers closing the hearing.
Please.
So can you explain to me a little bit more about the hardship in this...